I now call the Huntsville City Council meeting to order. If all of you would like to and are able to, please rise for the invocation led by Chaplain Frederick Woods, followed by the pledge allegiance led by Boy Scout Troop 102.
Eternal Creator, who transforms and unites the citizens of Huntsville, we recognize and celebrate our many different ways. We share, however, a sense of awe in the wonders of your creation, your healing of the human spirit. Fill this room with a sense of respect, purpose, and hope. Unify forces for our city. Provide our leaders at every level, wisdom, creativity, integrity, and courage. This is our prayer. Amen.
Please go ahead, sir.
We're gonna do something a little bit different on our pledge. I'm gonna repeat portions of the pledge and just repeat after me that. And I'm gonna explain what that means, okay? I did get permission from the Councilman Russell. All right? Right? It's Councilman Russell. Go ahead, it's Councilman Russell. Say it again. I pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance.
You promise to be loyal to the flag, to the symbol of your country, of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
A nation of fifty states and several territories, each with certain rights of its own, and to the republic.
And to the republic.
A country where people elect representatives from among themselves to make laws for everyone, for which it stands.
For which it stands.
The flag represents the values of our form of government in which everyone is equal under the law. One nation under God.
One nation under God.
A country formed under God, whose people are free to believe as they wish. Indivisible.
Indivisible.
The nation cannot be split into parts. With liberty and justice.
With liberty and justice.
With freedom and a system of law. For all.
For all.
For every person in the nation regardless of their differences. Two.
Thank you, Boy Scout Troop 102. The minutes from the April 24th meeting have been received and they'll stand approved if there's no objections. We're on resolutions and special recognitions. Mayor Battle, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to ask Terry Hatfield, our Director of Public Works, to come up. We have a resolution tonight that names this week as National Public Works Week. Would you like to talk about it, Mr. Hatfield?
Yes, sir. Each year, we always have one week where public works departments cross or recognize. And Mayor, we appreciate that. Our public works employers are hardworking, very dedicated, and on behalf of them, we appreciate the recognition. I'd like to have two other individuals, if they could, to join us. We have two of our state Board of Directors on the Public Works Board. One is Billy Southern, who works at our Public Works Department, the Superintendent. And the other's no stranger around here, Tom Cunningham, and I think he wants to make a presentation.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, and Terry. It's quite a pleasure to be here tonight. I represent APWA, American Public Works Association, which is a thirty thousand-member organization with members in Canada and the U.S. And its purpose is to provide resources, training, communication, technology, and just information to assist public works professionals in making their jobs more efficient and effective. So it's a great organization. Each year, it recognizes a week out of the year as National Public Works Week. And the primary purpose of this is to bring public awareness to the contributions that are made by the public works people throughout the country. So it is for the benefit of the public works people, for the public to be aware that public works does have a great impact on your lives, on your daily lives, whether they're fixing streets, resurfacing, picking up trash, mowing the grass, whatever it might be. Many times, they're not often recognized for the contributions that they actually make. So tonight, we want to commemorate and make aware the public the contributions from public works. So I'd like to present you with this framed poster from APWA commemorating May 18th through the 24th of 2014 as National Public Works Week, and thank you for your contributions and that of your staff in making Huntsville a better place and enhancing the quality of life in Huntsville, Alabama. That's the future skyline of Huntsville, possibly, based on the new comprehensive plan. Thank you.
Tom, thank y'all very much. And many of you don't realize that public works is unsung heroes. They're the ones who get out when the ice comes and snows come. They're the ones who get out and scrape your roads and have them ready to go the next morning. They stay up all night doing it, or they'll sleep at the public works facility at night so they can get up early in the morning and get out and get that done. They pick up your garbage. They fix your potholes. They resurface your streets. They are the basic infrastructure of the city and they take care of it in a great way. And Mr. Hatfield, thank you for the work that you do. Thank your whole crew for the work that you do. Joey McKee is part of your crew, and there's a whole bunch of others that we could mention, but they do a fantastic job, and thank you very much for the work that y'all do. Now, Ms. President, I'd like to call up Bill Steiner, the Director of our IT Department. We have some young cyber warriors with us tonight. Ms. Sutton, would you like to come up and talk to us about our young cyber warriors and bring them with us? This group first came to national attention about a year ago. Dynetics had a, what was it, a BeatDown.com or something like that? They had a cyber competition, which they had people from all over the world who entered into it. And these guys came in number two on it, and it was their first competition they ever entered, wasn't it? The first big competition they'd ever entered. So they came in number two in the world, not in the nation, not in the state, but in the world. And then just recently, we've had another great success, and tell us about the great success that we've had.
Well, it's probably best for me to let the team captain explain it because he was there. As the coach, I get to be there and support them, but during the competition, I'm not even allowed to talk to them. So they isolate them, and they put them in a position where they challenge them, and they give them really extraordinary tasks that they have to perform to demonstrate their abilities. And they do it totally independently, and so I'm gonna let James, the team captain, talk to you a little bit and let him introduce the rest of the team.
Hello. I am James Brom. Sometimes I've introduced myself as James Bond. So the cybersecurity team at Grissom participates in a number of competitions, the biggest of which is Cyber Patriot, which is what we went to Washington, D.C. for, to compete in the national competition. It had a little under three thousand teams registered this year, I think. It's the largest cybersecurity competition for high schoolers in the world. And we placed second in the nation at finals, which we were thrilled about. And we have each of our team members here.
Hi, my name's Morgan Wagner, and I validate and coordinate documents and resources for our team, AKA I help with the battle plan.
I'm Jeremy Lochner. I'm the networking guy for our team and the only one in the school that they could find that was taller than James.
I'm Christopher Lynn. I am the digital forensic specialist.
I'm Matthew Rogers. I'm the Microsoft Windows specialist for our team.
And I'm Frank Sutton. I'm one of the mentors that helps the team.
We have a number of great mentors from our community, including Mr. Sutton and Mr. Harrison, who's also here, in addition to our wonderful coach, Ms. Sutton. We've had a lot of support from the community. In fact, this summer, several of our team members have job opportunities at Dynetics and Huntsville Utilities, and we really appreciate Huntsville being a great environment for us to do this kind of work in.
Can y'all stay here a minute? You know, we have lots of people that we recognize, and one of the things that we have to recognize being in Huntsville, Alabama, we are a high-tech engineering town, high-tech town, but we are only as good as the workers that are gonna come out of the school system and the education system. And we compete not on just a, you know, a Huntsville, Alabama platform, or an Alabama platform, or even a United States platform. We compete nationwide, we compete worldwide. We compete with those kids who are coming out of India, with those kids who are coming out of China, those kids who are coming out of Germany. We compete on a day-to-day basis to see who is the best, who is the brightest, who is the smartest, who can carry your industry's own. And these are the guys who are gonna carry our industry's own for the next couple of decades, and we're gonna count on y'all to do that. But this is some of the best and the brightest, coming in number two in a competition with three thousand teams from across the world, something that we can be very proud of in the city of Huntsville. And to each of you, I say thank you for your efforts. You've done a great job. Go off to college, have a great time, make great grades, but then come back from whence you came. Come home, because we need you here to keep us moving forward, and thank you very much for all your efforts and everything.
Thank you.
Go down and shake hands with all the council members there, okay? Congratulations. They might jam your system. You'll be in trouble. Sarah Crocker, Sarah, would you come up? I think we have our CAFI Youth of the Month that we wanna talk about, and would you bring up your whole crew to talk about some great youth who are from this area? Harry, you wanna start off?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Staying in that same stream of youth doing great things in the area of technology, this is our Young Citizen of the Month, our Community Awareness for Youth, Star 99.1, Young Citizen of the Month from May. This is Chandler Foster. He goes to New Century Technology High School. He scored thirty-three on his ACT. He just received a Presidential Scholarship from Auburn University. He's in the Beta Club. This young man really has applied his mind. He is part of Team USA Green Power Vehicle Team that has went to Europe twice. They're going later this year. They finished in the top thirty-five of all vehicles that were made by Green Power on the third rock from the sun, and we're just so impressed with him. He gave back during the 2011 tornadoes, a relief effort, and he continues to mentor other young folks in this community. This young man really exemplifies what we want in our community. He gives back, he helps others, and he strives to be the best he can be.
This is a big honor for you, and you're an awesome young man. We've got a certificate to give to you, and it reads, "CAFI, Star 99.1, and the Human Relations Commission of the City of Huntsville is proud to honor Chandler Foster as the CAFI Star 99.1 Young Citizen of the Month."
My name is Buzz Stevens from Star 99.1. You are setting the foundation for the future of this country. We wanna thank you for everything you've done. Here's a small token of our appreciation, and thank you so much.
Chandler, I'm George Dugan from Don Corning National. I just wanna say it's wonderful to see all these young folks out here and to see you up here, and everything you've done for the community is absolutely wonderful, and what you've done to lead other people down that same path is outstanding. Thank you very much. Small card that tells you what we have in here, just a few tokens from us. Thank you very much.
And we're gonna finish it up with your Coin of Excellence on behalf of the CAFI Foundation, and then you gotta get over here and take this picture with the mayor, sir. Go ahead. You gotta look that way and smile. Thank you, Mayor and City Council.
Ms. President, that's all of my presentations. I've got two items that I'd like to call up. I'd like to ask the council for approval for the, to introduce the Arts and Entertainment District Ordinance and the Quigley Amendment tonight. I think it's gonna take unanimous consent to put this on the agenda.
Council members, first, we need to agree to put this on the agenda. It is an amendment to the Arts and Entertainment District. The chair moves to put this on the agenda. Second by Dr. showers, discussion. All those in favor of adding it to the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, it carries. We'll bring this up at a later time. We'll do it under New Items 14D.
And, Mr. Chairman, I have one other item that I wanted to bring up early. Last week, we approved the Business Relations Officer for the mayor's office. This week, we'd like to ask the council approval for the appointment of Harrison Diamond to the position of the Business Relations Officer, Grade Nineteen, Step Four. Many of you know Harrison. He has been with the Chamber of Commerce for a number of years. He's a young, bright mind, one of the young professionals in town, one of the first people under thirty we've ever had in our administration, so it's kinda nice having a young, bright mind, and he's been in some leadership programs throughout this area. He has a, if I read it right, a master's in public affairs from the University of Alabama in Huntsville, and a BA in communications and information sciences from the University of Alabama, and we would like to ask permission to go ahead and make that higher as of June 1st.
The chair moves to confirm the appointment. Second by Mr. Kling, discussion. All, Dr. showers.
President, Mayor, that gentleman is in our presence tonight. Did we ask him to stand here?
Welcome. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose, it carries.
And Harrison's dad is here, Gene Diamond, a longtime resident of Huntsville, who's now in Atlanta, I believe, and Gene came over to see his son, and I have a feeling that he came to see him get appointed, and I have a feeling that they might leave and go out to eat, because from now on, he's gotta stay at these council meetings, so thank y'all for coming.
Is that all, Mayor?
That's it. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. We have two resolutions for adoption only. 2A is a resolution recognizing the Union Chapel Missionary Baptist Church Weekend of Worship and Praise, celebrating twenty-five years of faithful service of Pastor and Sister O. Wendell Davis, May 16, 18, 2014, held at the Von Braun Center and Union Chapel Missionary Baptist Church.
Moved to approve.
Motion by Dr. showers, second by Mr. Culver, discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, carries. Dr. showers, do you wanna say anything?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I certainly want to read portions of this resolve. The City Council and the mayor of the City of Huntsville apprise that Union Chapel Missionary Baptist Church would have a weekend of worship and praise on May 16th and worship service on the 18th, 2014, celebrating twenty-five years of faithful service by Pastor and Sister O. Wendell Davis. The theme for the appreciation celebration is "Celebrating the Past, Embracing Our Future in Christ," Jeremiah, the twenty-ninth chapter and the eleventh verse. There will be a fellowship dinner at the Von Braun Center, North Hall, on Friday, May 16th, at 7:00 p.m., and conclude with praise and worship service on Sunday in the Union Chapel Missionary Baptist Church Sanctuary at 7:45 and 10:45. The guest speaker for Sunday's service will be Pastor Kenneth Maurice Davis, Tabernacle Baptist Church in Mississippi. I'm gonna stop there. On the occasion date, we will read this resolution in its entirety on behalf of the mayor and the city council.
Thank you, sir. B is a resolution congratulating Dr. Byron C. Hulsey, eighth head of school at Randolph. Dr. Hulsey became head of school of Woodbury Forest School in Virginia, his alma mater, effective July 1st, 2014. The chair moves for approval. Second by Mr. Kling, discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, it carries. We have one more announcement tonight. We have a presentation of the United Cerebral Policy Services in Huntsville by Ms. Cheryl Smith. Mr. Kling?
Mr. President, Ms. Smith is going to the microphone. She's gonna give just a brief overview of the outstanding services that the United Cerebral Policy does, including a recent benefit auction that they had, and I'll reserve my comments until after she has made her presentation.
Thank you very much, and thank you for the opportunity to come before you. I am from United Cerebral Policy, right here in Huntsville, Alabama. We have just recently concluded our fiftieth year of service in North Alabama. I just wanted to share, and I do have one for Councilman Culver as well, but I'm holding his bag, but I did have included a small token so you could also celebrate with us our fifty years of service. And just to tell you briefly, we're very thankful for Councilman Kling for donating a very unique item to our auction. Our Irish Evening is our largest fundraiser to benefit our local community. We'd also like to thank the entire council and the mayor for providing the governmental funds that are our Medicaid and our state and local, state and federal grant match dollars. So we wanna thank all of you and the community that comes up for Irish Evening to allow us to help individuals with disabilities in our communities and their families to be able to live, learn, work, play, and be fully included in our community as citizens of this great community. Very briefly, just to remind you, we serve all disabilities and all ages, so we're best known for our therapy services. We do have a lot of family supports, working with a lot of parents to learn how best to support and advocate for their children's needs. Three statewide programs that you may not be aware of, that you might have benefited from. We do have the, we are the state lead for the Department of Human Resources, doing all the quality childcare training in our area, which means that if you have a child in a local daycare, you most likely have benefited from our training programs to improve the quality of all the daycare services and how to include those that might have special, unique learning challenges. We also provide a respite program. The governor has appointed us as the state lead on that, and we support caregivers and their loved ones so that they can remain in the home for as long as possible and try to prevent out-of-home placements that are very costly. So we like to keep families intact, and we appreciate the support. If you have someone right now in our building, the ALS organization is meeting, but we serve Alzheimer's and all of the aging disabilities in addition to the developmentally acquired from birth. So a lot of individuals in car wrecks and other acquired disabilities. So if you need those services, please have them give me a call. And finally, we do have our technology program. We work with you to assess if, and in the state of, in this town, you know, we're very proud of our technology and what the space industry has done to commercialize those to where individuals with disabilities can benefit. So if you need demonstrated equipment, if you need us, we do give away equipment. We ask if you no longer need a wheelchair walker, hospital bed, or anything, if you'll donate it, we'll get it back out to our community free of charge. So a lot of state-of-the-art equipment, all the way down to very basic equipment, and that's what is featured on this bag, and we have information about those if the council or the mayor ever has an individual in the community needing our services. And I think Bill's gonna take this over, but we do wanna thank Debbie for a unique gift that she gave a very special person in her life.
Thank you, Cheryl. It is my distinguished pleasure to announce that the high bidder for the city council person for a day was Debbie Batson, who got it as a gift for her mother. We have Mother's Day coming up this weekend. Jackie, you are the person, so come on down, and we got a seat for you. And you can sit up here with me. Mr. President, I have a certificate that I wanted to present to Jackie. It reads, "Jackie, honorary District Four City Council member, in a great appreciation for your support of United Cerebral Policy in Huntsville and the Tennessee Valley," with the day's date on it. Jackie, we want to say Happy Mother's Day, and we're glad to have you up here. And also, I'm gonna give you your first goodie. This is one of the bags that Cheryl had, that she's given to the council member. Since you're one of us, it's your bag.
Thank you, Bill. I wanna thank all of y'all for putting that with me all the years. I've been longing to just come across this side of the desk for many, many years. I wanna thank my family, my son and my daughter. Stand up, stand up. My daughter-in-law, my two grandsons for their support over the years that I've been here. I missed my grandson's first birthday coming to a council meeting, and I don't think he ever could have gave me part. But anyway, I'm still here, and I wanna thank all of you for putting that with me. Thanks a lot, Debbie, and all of you.
Mr. President, I've been waiting for years to say this, but we can now say that Jackie Reed has bought her way onto the city council.
We have a picture of her.
We're glad to have you. Have a seat.
Mr. Kling, is it true that your seat went for twenty-six dollars?
All I know is Debbie wrote a check for three hundred dollars, wasn't it?
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you, thank you.
Look out, Mayor, I think she's after you next.
Okay, council members and the public, on the agenda tonight, 15A, T, and V have been deleted. Fifteen A's in Alpha, T is in Tom, V is in Victor. Fourteen B, C, and D, the administration has asked for unanimous consent that we vote on those items tonight. That's fourteen B is in Baker, C is in Charlie, and D, which is the one we just added. We have no business with outside legal representation. We do have public hearings to be held. Now is the time and place for the continuance of the public hearing to hear the appeal of Mr. Tommy Howell appealing decision of the Liquor License Review Committee denying a retail liquor lounge entertainment license to Club Upscale LLC doing business as Club Upscale at 2021 Golf Road, Huntsville, Alabama, 35802. Is there someone from the appellant that would like to explain why they need this license?
Is there anyone here from Club Upscale? Sir, field state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Dewey Brazelton, 1311 Governor's Drive, southeast Huntsville, Alabama. I own the real estate there, and I'm leasing it to Club Upscale, and they were denied a license, therefore, they appealed it to the council in order to get a license. I bought that property in 1970. I've had it forty-four years. It's been a club, been a place of assembly for forty-four years, and they're giving us a hard time about giving these people a license, and I met with the city attorney and several people, and I told them they need to give them a license or either buy the property, and I'd sell it to them for fifty cents on the dollar, but if I have to go to court, it'll be full price. And I think there's some other people here that's gonna speak that would like to have a club up there. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is anyone else from Club Upscale would like to speak? Yes, Club Upscale, anybody else, and then now the public, if you'd like to speak on this issue, please go to the microphone, state your name and address for the record.
All right, Terry Michael, 115 Mill Creek Crossing, Madison. Actually, I have a lot of knowledge of this subject because I am a DJ. I've been a DJ for thirteen years. I've worked in that building. I've been familiar with it for at least the last ten years, and there's some things I think are important for you to know, and I hope that after learning this information, maybe you will decide to take another vote on this. One thing that most people are not aware of is that since Lucas Ray has closed- One thing that most people are not aware of is that since Vukarey has closed down, the GLBT community has had no place to go for a dance floor. They desperately need a dance floor and this is why. Because what's happened is they have spread themselves out. They either go to Nashville, or they go to Birmingham and spend their money, or they go to other street clubs here in town. The problem with that is, it's not their community. There's a misunderstanding at times between the two communities. And I know personally that it's been very dangerous for the GLBT community to be up in these other clubs. My friend Brian had his head ran through a car window because he was in the wrong place. So, this building is very important to the GLBT community. They're very familiar with the building. There's history there. We talk a lot about history here in Huntsville. Well, it's not just the mainstream that has a history. And that building is very important. When it has been a GLBT club, I don't believe there have been many problems. Of course, every club, there are some. But I don't think the history of the serious problems have been under GLBT community. Everyone understands that's involved in this project, that it's going to have to be run clean. It's going to have to be run professionally to get people up that hill to go to it. So, I think it's going to be an addition to the community. It's going to be an addition to Huntsville because of the revenue that it's going to bring in. These people will stop going out of the city and they will stay here and they will spend their money. Also, I want to talk about the history of that building. I know none of you have probably ever stepped in it. But it is a beautiful building. It has a rich history of entertainers. Famous entertainers have come. They've been in that dressing room. They've entertained on that stage. It's a beautiful and unique building, has a beautiful view. And I know that one of the biggest problems, I had a party there three years ago, had 450 people at it, was parking. I understand that Mr. Brazelton has met those needs in parking. I really feel strongly that this is a safety issue. Our GLBT community needs it. I feel strongly that it's going to be a money-making prospect also. And like I said, when I first moved to Huntsville, two buildings stuck out to me. And one was the library, the old library downtown at Big Spring Park. And then the other was that building on Golf Road. And unfortunately, our old library, which was such a unique building, is no longer there. And I urge you to please understand the history and respect the history of that building and what it means to a certain community here in Huntsville and why it is so desperately needed by them. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public wish to address the council on this matter? I see that there are a couple of people signed up on our communications from the public list from Golf Road. This would be the time to talk about the club if you want to speak. So, please go to the microphone, state your name and address for the record.
My name is Linda Ferguson. I live at 2225 Golf Road, Unit Number 214. I'm also the president of the Homeowners Association up there for the whole 100 units up there. After the meeting last month, I guess it was now, I ran into Mr. Brazelton after the meeting and he did explain to me that it was in fact going to be a gay club. He promised us that they would post signs saying that they could not park on our property. There would be an off-duty police officer up there on duty and everything. But the bad history, along with what we've had to go through the last four years up there, everybody is still up in arms about it because of the traffic, the noise, the beer bottles being thrown over our fences. We have to pay someone extra money to come clean up our property when we already have to pay $200 a month for the homeowners association fees. And unfortunately, the history of this, everybody's still up in arms about it. They do not want the club up there. And I mean, I'm sympathetic to Mr. Howell because I think, you know, it'd be fine. It was a gay club when I first moved up there 10 years ago. We had no problems when it was a gay club. But the long range, how long is it going to be a gay club? When will it revert back to being leased to any and everybody that wants to go up there, have a party, destroy the whole neighborhood up there? So, we're looking at the long term on this, not just short term. And I brought in all the people that I talked to after the last meeting to let them know what Mr. Brazelton has said, to help with our safety features and stuff. And they are still, all still against it because of what has happened in the last four years, in particularly.
Thank you.
So.
Ms. Stamper, will you go get the petition, please?
Mr. Kling wanted me to turn these in.
Ma'am, if you'll go to the microphone, state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Carolyn Woolnuff.
I'm sorry, ma'am, we're having trouble hearing you. If you could speak directly in the microphone as loud as you can, thank you.
My name is Carolyn Woolnuff. I live at Sutton Place. And I can confirm, as Linda says, it gets very, very noisy over there. It's unpleasant. My window looks out directly on the building and it's noisy. I've seen people urinating in the parking area just under our window. And I understand that Golf Road is not sufficient. It's only two lanes. And the police have said that it isn't enough to have that sort of traffic up at the top. But, so just to confirm what Linda has said, it's not a good place for us.
Thank you. Does anyone else from the public wish to address the council on this issue? Do any city departments want to be on the record? The Clerk Treasurers Office, Zoning Administration, Fire Marshal? Ms. Culver, if you state your name and address, or name and title for the record, please?
Dennis Culver, License Review Committee. What I'd like to do is just give a little history of the location, license history. Since 1966, I mean, I'm sorry, since 1996, we've received four applications for a lounge with live entertainment, including this applicant. The previous applicants, for various reasons, were denied. Through that same time period, since 1996, the License Review Committee has approved several restaurant licenses. And a lot of people keep referring to it as a club license. What we've been issuing is a restaurant license up there.
Thank you, Mr. Culver. Are there any other city departments that would like to be on the record?
Jim McGuffey's zoning coordinator. We denied the license based on parking for the reason that this particular application was a 60% ratio as a lounge. It's based on occupant load. And his requested occupant load got down to 586 from the Fire Marshal's office, which would require 352 parking places. Currently has 205 parking places. So, he's deficient over 100 parking places. That's why we denied the application.
Thank you.
Mr. President.
Mr. Culver?
Could I speak again, please?
Yes, sir. State your name again for the record, please.
My name's Dewey Brazelton. Number one, the people that are complaining, they moved up there beside a club. The club was there when they bought a place or moved in there. They knew it was a club. Number two, Councilman Will Culver and I went up there yesterday and he counted the parking places and he counted 358. That's how many parking places we've got now. When McGuffey counted them, it wasn't lined off. The markings were missing and he really couldn't tell. He saw some of the places that had been marked, but we strapped it off and so forth. And it's got 358 as we speak.
Mr. President, if I may, you finish, Mr. Brazelton.
I am, but if any of the councilmen would like to ask me a question or two, I'd be happy to answer them.
They will if they want to. Ms. Culver?
I just have a comment. And I certainly have heard what the residents are saying up on Golf Road. I do want to say this, that I have known the Brazeltons for probably some 30-plus years. And they have always been outstanding citizens in our community. And the club business, I know, Mr. Brazelton, that you've had multiple businesses in Huntsville. Some of them that I frequent back during the day. And they were very well-run establishments. So, I do want to say to the community that, and I'm feeling you, the HOA president, that it's okay, that you're okay with a particular club going there, which we don't want to judge what may happen with this particular club based on some bad experiences per se in the past. But what I did do, and Mr. McGuffey, I certainly have nothing but the utmost confidence in you and everything that you're doing with the city and even the things that you've done for me personally. But I was concerned about the parking because I know that we, the city of Huntsville, cannot validate our own ordinance. So, when Mr. Brazelton called me, I did go up there. And by the way, my shoes did get dusty, so I think I'm doing shoe shine. But we walked that area. And I just want to run by you real quickly what I came up with based on the parking spaces that were marked off. And indulge me for just a minute. If you stand in front of the building, directly in front of the building, that would be the north side, okay? If you're standing facing the building, so indulge me for a minute. If you're standing facing the building, and I'm going to refer to the east, I'm going to refer to it as East Side 1 and East Side 2. East Side 1, if you're facing the building, it'll be to your left. There are approximately, and I kind of have these locked together, there are approximately six spaces on one side, five on the other side. And then when you go to East Side 2, there is about 10 spaces. Now, that makes for a total of 23 spaces. I'm sorry, all of that is East Side 1, I'm sorry. East Side 2, 23 spaces on East Side 1. East Side 2 has approximately 94 spaces. The pool has been closed in. There are 26 spaces in the pool area there. And all of these are spaces that are not the added spaces. I'll talk about those new spaces in a minute. And then if you go to the west side of the building, that would be on the right side, I found approximately 93 spaces on West Side 1, the first set of parking spaces. And then you go over a little further west, there are approximately 77 spaces. Now, those spaces were spaces that were originally designated as spaces. Keep those numbers in mind. And then when you come down to the new side of the building, in front of the building, there were 71 new spaces added. So, when I looked at all of those spaces and for the size of the building, I came up with 358. And I don't know, Mr. McGuffey, if you'll be able to get back out there perhaps and revisit those. I don't know if we're factoring in the new spaces. But what Mr. Brazelton has done was to create parking in front of the building where the grass was. And he has created that same amount of green space further back to the south side of the building. So, to save green space. So, unless I'm just in error, seemingly, seemingly, there may be enough spaces up there. In fact, probably about seven or eight more spaces, I believe, than are required. Would you have an opportunity to maybe go back and revisit that?
We would surely like to, you know, revisit it if you feel it necessary. But Councilman, we did count the spaces this week after striping. The issue we have is, we can't count any of the gravel spaces due to the fact that they were installed without our knowledge. And the ordinance states that if the parking lot is improved more than 5%, the entire parking lot must be compliant with lighting and landscaping. Parking lot's not compliant with lighting or landscaping. So, by adding these spaces, it's actually making it worse from a zoning ordinance perspective.
What would it take for those spaces to be in compliance by chance?
Well, lighting, first of all, there's no lights in the parking lot. So, there's no lighting. Landscaping has been lost due to the increase in parking spaces. So, I don't know what the numbers are to say what the issues would be. But definitely add lights, most likely have to add more landscaping.
More lights and landscaping?
Yes, sir.
And Mr. Brazelton, if I may, Mr. President, are you able to accommodate?
First of all, Mr. McGuffey's wrong. I paid the city utility company for 34 outside lights up there and that's been going on for 30 years. There's two street lights right in front of the park that we just pay, put the gravel on. So, we got 36 lights in the parking lot. Evidently, he went into daytime instead of going at night.
Is there, how many additional lights, Mr. McGuffey, you think may be needed?
I'm not sure how many lights would be needed to satisfy the ordinance. An engineer would have to calculate that information.
I guess what I'm getting at is, rather than to see an empty building, and I know this is Councilman Kling's district, rather than to see an empty building, which could become an eyesore, if there could be some use out of it, especially since this particular club is not, hasn't been problematic, you know, for neighbors in the past and with the employment of an off-duty officer or two, probably could help rectify a lot of those concerns. So, I'm hoping that somehow that we can work with Mr. Brazelton. And Mr. Brazelton, you will also have to work with the city to try and make that property workable in terms of what I've heard, just a matter of seemingly a couple of more lights and maybe some landscape to get it in compliance.
Yeah, if that's the option he chooses to go. But still, if he's deficient in parking, the only way to resolve any additional remedy would be the Board of Adjustment to apply for a variance for parking, for insufficient parking.
Okay, okay. Thank you, Mr. McGuffey. Thank you, Mr. Brazelton. Thank you, Mr. President.
Ms. Kling?
Mr. President, Mr. McGuffey, okay, we've heard 358 parking places. How many parking places are required, you know, for this to be in compliance?
He would be compliant if there's in fact 358. He needs 352 based on the occupant load of 586.
Three, so 352, okay. And I want to make sure I understand, I think the format of the club that is being discussed is, and based upon what we heard from the residents, that format is not a problem. It's historically been quiet for the neighborhood and that's not a problem. I think the issue that comes up, and correct me if I'm wrong about this, but this license, this liquor license, will not have anything to do or would not restrict that format. And while that format is quiet and compatible with the neighborhood, pretty much, there's nothing that prohibits it from changing to a rock and roll format or something with loud people coming in and out? Can somebody, I guess, confirm that or tell me I'm wrong or explain how the format works?
That's correct, Mr. Kling.
Personally, based upon the history of the neighborhood, I'm not going to support this license. I did like what I heard. In fact, at one point a couple of years ago, I think with the previous administration, there was a little interest that was expressed. I expressed it to the, about the city buying that facility. It could be a great neighborhood asset. And of course, that gets the club out of the equation. Possibility, if the building can be utilized, it could be a recreational facility. If not, just where it is up there would be a beautiful passive park. So, you know, that's an idea that I would certainly find agreeable. But just on what I remember about the history of this, it's not something that I would support.
Does anyone else want to be included on the record? Sir, from Fire Department, did you wish to speak?
George Nagel, Assistant Fire Marshal for City Huntsville. History on the building, Mr. Brazelton asked us to come out and do a calculation for an occupant load. And that's where the 586 occupant load came from. And it's by the use in the floor plan of the building, so that's where that comes from. As for Fire Department issues, without proper parking, a lot of times you get on-street parking, which can affect our firefighting capabilities for the adjacent apartments.
Thank you. Does anybody have questions for the Fire Department? Sergeant Roberts, would you like to speak?
Thank you. Mark Roberts with the Huntsville Police Department. I just want to talk a little bit about impact. And let me phrase this, I think some people might get confused about what we're asking for. Right now, this license that we put in for is for alcohol and entertainment only. Since nineteen ninety-six at the Plush Horse, there has been a restaurant with entertainment and alcohol. See what I'm saying? The usage in this time has changed. In the past, we have actually denied this type of license since nineteen ninety-six at this location. The owners had resolved that by changing to a restaurant with entertainment. So this, when we're talking about a lounge with just entertainment, these are the ones in the history of Huntsville that we've always had our most problems with. They're there for one reason, and that's drinking. Now, you can understand, our zoning ordinances have always put those away from residential neighborhoods, always in the past. Well, this is a unique situation in that this zoning up there is heavy industry, but you can see what surrounds this club is strictly a hundred percent residential. Now, you can understand, this club is one of the largest clubs we have in Huntsville occupancy-wise. Usually, they're there for one thing, drinking. They're not there for restaurants, they're not there for eating. Now, you can talk about the history, and I know Councilman Culver said that we've never had problems up there, but we have had problems up there, Councilman Culver, on numerous occasions. Wish you could be there at my phone when it rings at night on the parking issues. One of the biggest problems we've had at the Plush Horse for the entire history of this has been parking. We have never had enough parking. Now, you can understand, this was grandfathered prior to this, okay? In other words, what I'm saying, it's been in existence so long that the old parking regulations held for this club, which they met those requirements in the past. Well, we have changed those because of the problems that we have at lounges with alcohol, and boosted those up to sixty percent because you can see the problems that we have. The majority of most of the problems that happened in this club happened in the parking lot and associated with all the residents around. You can see when it gets full, when they parked in the condos, which they called me every night, to say, can you do, they had to literally impound those vehicles themselves. They were threatened by the people that parked there. There was shots fired in those parking lots, in their condominiums, in their apartments that were associated with the club. So what we're saying is, yes, this does impact this. I know that in the past, that he has been grandfathered, he's been allowed to do this. We have denied these type of licenses in the past. Also, I want to talk a little bit about that area. You know, right now, the Huntsville Police Department has started an initiative. They have started it at Golf Road. You know, in the history of, in the southern part of town, we have had bigger problems on Golf Road. We have started an initiative on crime and quality of life issues to try to make that a better place. What I'm asking is that, you know, that is one impact that makes just more calls for service and more crime and more people moving out. The other thing I want to say is, we have been consistent in our past with licenses when it affects neighborhoods to deny these type of licenses. And I'll give you an example. Councilman Culver and us just went through this, not more than denying a license that was impacting a neighborhood, and that was the reason we did. It had the proper zoning, but it was impacting that neighborhood negatively, and we denied that license. I want to go back. Councilman Showers had a club that was up there on Max Luther many years ago. It was going to be a large-scale club that was going to impact an assisted living behind there. We denied that license. He was one of the proponents of that. Councilman Oshewski, we had a license not too long ago that was going to be on South Parkway that was going to impact that residential negatively, and we denied that. Councilman Russell, you know what it's been like down in Five Points and the parking that we had, and we took care of those problems with ordinances that affected that. What I'm saying is, we have always protected our neighborhoods in the past. And I think this is one time that we might be able to have a difference if we don't approve this license for that reason. And the other thing, one of the questions, by them getting this license instead of a restaurant or a different type of license, they can't hire an off-duty officer because we don't allow them to work at these type of establishments. So you can see that this has been a history. We've been very consistent about protecting our neighborhoods, and I just wanted to put a little bit around what that was. Thank you.
Question from Sergeant Roberts. Does anyone else wish to address the council on this particular issue? Mr. Joffre, could you advise the chair, did I meet all the requirements of the public hearing?
Yes, sir, you have.
Okay, last call. Does anyone wish to address the council on this? The public hearing is now closed. Councilmembers, if there's no vote taken, then the decision stands. If you want to overturn it, you'll have to make a motion to overturn it. So is there any action?
We're still, we can still have discussion, but without motions, can't we?
I'll allow that. Go ahead, Mr. Kling.
Mr. Brazelton, well, you know, I'd mentioned, it's been kind of floated off and on over the years about the city buying it for recreation. What would the price be? I know there'd have to be an appraisal done, but like if it was made into a neighborhood park or something, what, I mean, how much are we talking about?
The last appraisal I had on it was a million, too. It's got five acres of land and probably more parking than any place in Huntsville.
Okay, obviously, you know, the city has to...
Hold on, hold on, hold on. Sir, sir, you're out of order, sir. Are you asking a question? Mr. Brazelton, you have a floor.
I thought Mr. Kling asked me to answer him.
Go ahead, please.
I made a statement the other day when I met with the council, the city attorney and so forth, that whatever the appraisal is, I'll set it to the city fifty cents on the dollar, and I'll take a tax write-off of the other fifty percent.
Does that answer your question, Mr. Kling?
My question to Mr. Roberts is...
Sir, the public hearing's closed.
Thank you.
Does that answer your question?
It does. Mr. President, I'll make a motion to, wait, is it a motion to overturn?
I don't think if you're...
If I'm not in support, what is...
You don't make a motion. Is there anyone that wishes to overturn the decision? Then the decision of the liquor license view board stands.
That's correct.
Moving on. Now is the time and place for a public hearing on a resolution authorizing the demolition of an unsafe building constituting a public nuisance located at six thirteen Kenyon Road. Mr. Benyon?
Counsel, this resolution would declare the building at six thirteen Kenyon Road Northwest an unsafe building and grant us permission to demolish it. This is state law which would allow us to sell the property at a tax sale if the owner does not pay to cover the cost of demolition. The property was inspected by an independent contractor and is not economically feasible to repair. Owner has been notified of the proposed action and may wish to speak. We have photos here showing this. This is basically a hoarding situation in which a fire occurred, and we would just ask for your support in allowing us to do the demolition on this.
Thank you, sir. Does anyone from the public wish to address the council on this particular issue? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Is there a motion? Chair moves for approval.
Second.
Second by Doc Showers. Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? It carries. We have several public hearings to be set. B one is a resolution set a public hearing on an ordinance to amend Article fifteen, Residence two B District, Section fifteen point one, uses permitted to add single-family attached dwellings as a permitted use. This will be set for June twenty-six, two thousand fourteen. The chair moves to set the hearing.
Second.
Second by Doc Showers. Discussion. All those in favor setting the hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. We have a resolution set a public hearing on an ordinance to amend Article seventy-four, non-conforming lots, non-conforming uses of structures and premises by deleting the existing Section seventy-four point one, non-conforming lots of record and unified lots. This will be set for June twenty-six, two thousand fourteen, regular council meeting.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion by Doc Showers. Second by Mr. Kling. Discussion. All those in favor setting the hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. We have a resolution set a public hearing on an ordinance zoning newly annexed property lying on the west side of Doug Hill Road and north of Rain Tree Road to Residence one District. This will be set for the June twenty-six, two thousand fourteen, regular council meeting.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Doc Showers. Second by Mr. Culver. Discussion. All those in favor setting the hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. We have a resolution set a public hearing on an ordinance to amend newly annexed property lying on the north side of Mohawk Road and west of Taylor Road to Residence one A District. This will be set for the June twenty-six, two thousand fourteen, regular council meeting.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Doc Showers. Second by Mr. Culver. Discussion. All those in favor setting the hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. Five is a resolution to declare a public nuisance located at six thirteen Kenyon Road Northwest Huntsville, and set to date for when objections will be heard. This will be set May twenty-second, two thousand fourteen, the regular council meeting.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion by Doc Showers. Second by Mr. Kling. Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries.
Counsel Russell, okay, this particular portion of this resolution, you declared a resolution on the structure on the first one. This one is the junk portion, and on the state law, we also have to go through that same process. So you're declaring a resolution, and then it sets the public hearing to hear objections. We've already seen the photos, so we just wanted to make clear what we were doing there.
Okay, and so that will be on May twenty-second?
Right.
Thank you. We're not communications for the public. When I call your name, you have three minutes to address the council. Terry Michael?
Terry Michael, one fifteen Mill Creek Crossing. I just want to real quick say that I am disappointed that y'all decided not to retake a vote on that. I think the history of it is very important, and talking about diversity and things here in Huntsville, history's important, not just to the mainstream community, but to the other communities as well. But what I really want to say is thank you for your meeting the other night, the big picture. Very informative, well-run. I think that this is a really exciting thing moving forward. I think this will give us an opportunity to address some of the issues of inclusiveness and diversity in our communities, and the transparency y'all showed was amazing. I hope it continues on that path. I want to thank you for that, and hopefully, in the focus groups, we'll be able to have people from all walks of life that can have input in those. And so actually, I'm just here to say thank you very much, and I'm really excited to see what that program is going to bring to the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kling?
If I could kind of follow up on something that she had said, which I hope we can, actually, this may have been turned out to be a good thing, but that area up there, geographically, there are not too many recreational facilities around it. I know there's a park, but nothing as far as neighborhood. And I've kind of mentioned to Councilman Culver, but if there's a way, I think it would certainly be worth pursuing to see what city appraisal, what could be worked out, but that would certainly be a great neighborhood enhancement if we could somehow use it as a park of some sort, that facility up there.
Ma'am, you're out of order.
But anyway, I just wanted to kind of reiterate that, something, following up on what you were talking about, and I think Councilman Culver's going to follow up on that with Mr. Joffrey on or the Facilities Department, Finance or whatever.
May I make a comment?
I would yield if that's okay, because I said it.
Okay, ma'am, okay, but councilmembers, this is getting frustrating. Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
Okay, I will agree. I mostly hate to see the building just end up getting tore down because we can't find a use for it, but I will say this, I think that the kind of club they're proposing is the only kind that's going to exist and last there. I think that's why the last four years have been difficult, because it's been trying to find its identity, and that is its identity. I think that's the only community that will go up there if it is a club, but if we can find other uses for it, you know, I think that would be wonderful to you.
Is it okay to move on, Mr. Kling?
Thank you, thank you for indulging.
Mr. Culver, do you want to?
And just to echo some of the sentiments that Mr. Kling has already said, and I'm sharing your view, Ms. Michael, that some use of that facility, I wish that we had the votes for it to have been a club, especially considering the sensitivity of some of the experiences that people who patronize that particular club are experiencing in other places. But if we could, that area is a beautiful piece of property. If the city mayor could purchase that, and we never can have too many recreational facilities, and if we can work it within the budget, I certainly will be willing to stimulate conversation between legal and the Brazeltons regarding that. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Troy Gardner?
Hello to each of you. I'm Pastor Troy, Fellowship of Faith Church, to the mayor and council. On Monday, May the fifth, a press conference was held regarding boycotting local convenience stores that sell drug paraphernalia in open view of our kids. The response has been overwhelming and supportive of this initiative. I want to thank Mayor Battle, Councilman Showers, Councilman Kling for their support. I also want to thank the HPD for their quick response to the communication. In addition to that, I want to thank Kenny Anderson for his encouragement. During the press conference, I mentioned Father George Clement, a Catholic priest in Chicago, who piloted the same initiative in his community. He has agreed to come to Huntsville and the Fellowship of Faith on Wednesday, June the eighteenth, and I want to invite you to come as we seek to make our city and community better. Again, I just want to say thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Culver?
Pastor Gardner, I certainly was aware of your endeavor, and I support you and what you're doing wholeheartedly. That particular week, I believe we were in Montgomery on the fifth, I'm sorry, in Mobile. So anyway, keep up the good work, and whatever I can do to help, I'm certainly amenable to whatever it is I can do as well.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Jerry Cox?
Jerry Cox, forty twenty-nine, Telstar Circle. Thank you, Mr. President. Counsel first, as a veteran of the United States Army, I wish to respectfully acknowledge the three U.S. Army soldiers killed in combat in Afghanistan since I last spoke at this council meeting. Mr. President, as you know, I'm a real rail fan. What that means is I love trains. About six weeks ago, five or six weeks ago, I went down to the Huntsville Depot to await the arrival of the circus train. Went to watch the train come in and spot the cars on the different railings and so on. I had a few extra minutes, and I noticed there at the depot, a city entity, Old Glory was up there, all tangled up with another, with the state flag. I called it to the attention of the person in charge at that particular time there at the depot. They went out and they lowered the flag, fooled around with it a little bit, put it back up. I've been gone about all of April, but yesterday I noticed, about six weeks later now, there Old Glory is still all, you know, a highly gross improper display of the United States flag. Today's VE Day. We ought to be, you know, I served to defend the flag, and it irritates me to no end that an entity of this city cannot properly display the United States flag. Since this old E eight, E five, I'm sorry, I promoted myself there, Colonel John, this old E five can't get it done, maybe one of the Colonel Johns can go down to the depot and get them to correctly display the United States flag on city property. Thirdly, Mr. President, being a retired federal public servant, I want to remind everyone that this is National, this week is National Public Service Recognition Week. Not Public Works Week next week, but Public Service Recognition Week, where we recognize the service of the federal, state, local employees serving the public. And so I want to recognize all of the city employees that serves me, my family, and my community, whether it be the people that's out there mowing the grass on Patton Road or today, or the men that came by and picked up my garbage, the police that's always coming by, the firemen that's waiting for my call, all aspects of the city employees. I salute you on Public Service Recognition Week. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Cox. Ms. Linda Ferguson? Does Mrs. Ferguson wish to speak? I'm not sure of the next name. It's at twenty-two twenty-five Golf Road, Unit three oh two. It's at twenty-two twenty-five Golf Road, Unit three oh two. Then it appears the next name, last name is Wright, maybe Dorothy Wright. Dwight Wright, sorry Dwight.
That's fine, my handwriting is not very good. I was, um, had signed up to speak on item fifteen S on the agenda tonight, but understand that that might possibly not be actually put up for a vote tonight. Can I reserve my comments till fifteen S is for you?
Sir, you might want to go ahead with your comments, because normally we wouldn't take public comment when we debate fifteen S.
Is, is there a way to request that fifteen S be pulled from the consolidated approval? And may I ask if it's still, um, being considered to, um, to postpone actually voting on that?
I can't guarantee you, but I think that the, that's my intention is postpone it, and I assume three council members go along with that, but I can't guarantee that.
Okay, if, with, is it possible, there are several of us that wanted to speak on that, but we would like to withhold our comments if it is going to be postponed, is, would there be an opportunity to speak at that time?
Okay, if we, if somehow we did take it up, we'll allow you to speak as a special consideration.
Thank you, President Russell.
Dewey Brazelton. Ms. Reed, you're next up. Do you want to go join the public? You want to stay up here with us? Stay with us, or you're going to, you're going to pass?
Mr. President, if she's not speaking, we might have to make this, uh, more long-term for her up here.
You said I could speak up.
Mr. President, I would, I'll yield my, I'll yield some of my time when we get to city council members, let our guest council member comment.
Thank you. We're now at eight Huntsville Utility Items. Eight A is a resolution authorizing mayor to execute agreement among Madison County, Alabama, and the city of Huntsville, doing business as Huntsville Utilities, allowing Huntsville Utilities to provide, Huntsville Utilities to provide and sell water to Madison County. Mr. Roszewski has notified the chair he will recuse himself and abstain from voting. The chair moves for approval.
Second.
Second by Doc Showers. Mr. Stowe, are you in the audience? Mr. Stowe, if you could introduce yourself and your new title, and, uh, tell us about this, please.
Uh, my name is Jay Stowe. I'm the president and CEO at Huntsville Utilities. Uh, I appreciate the opportunity to be here, uh, with you, uh, tonight. The, um, the topic is the, uh, proposed water agreement between Huntsville Utilities, Madison County. It's a long time in coming. Uh, we have spent a lot of time looking at it. It will provide a thirty-year, uh, long-term agreement for Huntsville Utilities to provide water to the, uh, to Madison County, provides a stable supply for the county and a stable, uh, revenue source and, uh, planning tool for, uh, for Huntsville Utilities. It's already been approved by the county commission, and it comes to you from the, um, Waterworks Board, uh, requesting your approval.
Mr. Stowe, how will this benefit the customers in the city?
Provides us a much more stable, uh, supply definition. We already are supplying on peak days the, the county. It also provides a, a revenue base, uh, that will, uh, help us stabilize rates, uh, longer term.
Thank you. Does anyone else have questions for Mr. Stowe? Call for vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it carries with Mr. Roszewski abstaining. We have no board appointments to be voted on. Do we have any board appointment nominations?
Mr. President?
Mr. Kling.
Uh, I've been notified, uh, that Ernie Taylor has resigned from the Beautification Board, and I would like to nominate Donna Alt Parker, uh, to that position. The term would expire October first, two thousand fourteen.
Thank you. Are there any other nominations? Moving on, we're at ten approval expenditures. Ten A is a resolution authorizing expenditure for payment. Mr. Kling.
Mr. President, move for payment of vouchers of seven million nine hundred seventy-five thousand nine hundred twenty-three dollars and ninety-five cents.
Motion by Mr. Kling, second by Mr. Culver, discussion. All those in favor, the payments please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it carries. Mr. Kling, do you have a finance committee report?
Uh, no other business, Mr. President, thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Battle.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, we have, uh, several announcements. Uh, the, uh, fifth annual mayor's bike ride will be held on May seventeenth at eleven o'clock. We'd like to have everybody out riding their bike, uh, that day. It's a very short run. It's a four-mile run. Uh, our rules are that there are no heels, uh, and that the mayor finishes first. Um, we, helmets are required, uh, with safety first. When, uh, everybody has to wear their helmet, and there will also be a kids' bike rodeo at nine AM. This is, uh, this is done in conjunction with our Healthy Huntsville Saturday in the park that will go on from nine to twelve. Uh, we've got free fitness activities, children's events, cooking, gardening demos, lots of fun things happening down in Big Spring Park on, um, on Saturday, May seventeenth. So I'd love for everybody to come down. Um, bring your bike, bring your bike helmet, and, uh, and it's an enjoyable event to come to. Uh, today, we went to the opening of the state soccer tournaments. We promised them good weather, uh, for today. Couldn't promise tomorrow, but, um, they are, uh, starting the state soccer tournament, um, uh, tomorrow at, uh, John Hunt Park. It's some of the most beautiful fields you'll ever see. Uh, landscape and, uh, parks and recreation have done a fantastic job with those fields, and that's what keeps people coming back to, to Huntsville because of the work that they've done there. Uh, there's also regional softball at the Kiwanis Field. Uh, it's a regional girls' hu- um, high school softball tournament, uh, that will be going on at, uh, John, at the Kiwanis Field. And finally, um, everybody may notice that I have a pin on it that says No Place to Hate. Um, today, there was a ceremony with the Huntsville City Schools where every school in the system, uh, certified as a No Place to Hate. And that means that the kids there respect each other, uh, that they are anti-bullying, uh, that they believe in, uh, recognizing each other's differences and recognizing that, uh, we have a good community to live in. Um, it was a fantastic ceremony. It was a great thing. When you see schoolchildren across the system, all twenty-three thousand, who represent, uh, that their portions, uh, that they buy into a No Place to Hate, it means that when your child goes to school, or your grandchild, which will be my, my grandchild will go to school, that they're in a safe environment. They're in a place that they can, uh, enjoy the learning process and have a great learning process. And that's something that I want to applaud the school board, Ms. Robinson, which you will take them back to congratulations for putting that into the system. Uh, there's, there's been a lot of effort by the school board to put that into, into our system and to make sure that we have a quality education out there. When you start with No Place to Hate, and then you also start with a great academic program, um, there's a lot of learning that can go on, and that really makes a difference. We saw those kids here tonight. We saw that we've got to be competitive, not on the national scene, but we've got to be competitive on the international scene, and this is one of the ways that we do it. So thank you very much for what y'all do.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor Battle. Mr. Roszewski.
Jerry, thanks for the update. Um, one of the Colonel Johns will fix this flag ordeal. We agree with you, and every opportunity that we ever see it not flown appropriately, we, we, we get involved and appreciate you, uh, keeping an eye on stuff like that. It's great to see the Grissom folks tonight, um, in an academia, uh, and I, and I love sports, but it's always great to see academic-type folks up here as well. I didn't get to make the Tuesday event, but I, I've only got this great feedback. I have, uh, I realized since I've been in Huntsville nine years, it's the first time I've been, I mean, I couldn't even get out of the bed on Tuesday and Wednesday, so that is, uh, I wasn't feeling very well, so I didn't get to make that, but I heard it was a great event. And then, uh, Harrison, I, I, it's great to see you, uh, you're coming up and being the mayor's pick on this. Uh, the mayor has done a phenomenal job since I've been up here of everybody he has the appro, the rights to pick to come work on his staff, has nothing, has always picked, uh, super folks, and you're falling right in that, right in that zone. As soon as I found out about who it was and all that, I was, I was really excited to see that. I'm a big fan of the Chamber, as you guys know, but at the same time, you know, take one from the Chamber, bring them up here, and, uh, you guys, Chamber always figures out a way to fire, to hire great folks back there. But I'm really honored that you're coming up here and excited to see some youth and all the above, and, uh, you're, you're a great young man. That's all I got.
Thank you, sir. Hope you feel better. Mr. Culver.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, just a couple of things, and just to ditto what John has already said, I'm certainly elated that you're going to be working, uh, with us as well. I feel like it's just a continuation of a relationship that began when you went to work for the Chamber and I came to work for the council. So I'm looking forward to working with you. I was in Mobile for the Alabama League of Municipality Meeting, and as always, I'm, I'm really, um, uh, appreciative of that opportunity, and even more grateful, uh, once I get back. We had an opportunity to meet with all of the mayors and council representatives throughout the state. It's amazing at some of the issues that other municipalities are experiencing, and it's always good to be able to, uh, chime in and, and, and contribute to whatever concerns they have, and likewise, benefit from some of those as well. We are truly blessed to be here in Huntsville, and, uh, I, I'm reminded of that every time I get an opportunity to travel to other places. And, and, Mr. President, sometimes I ask rhetorical questions just to see how the things we're doing here compare with what they're doing there. And, uh, the way that you're running this council is, is right on point, uh, in terms of the minutes we allow the public to speak, uh, in terms of, uh, allowing them to come back and speak at the end of council. So, um, we certainly appreciate what you're doing. That's not saying that I'm going to vote for you for president the next time, but I just wanted you to know that. Is Mr. Binion here, uh, Community Development, um, or representative? I saw him earlier. Uh, just one quick thing, uh, Mr. Binion, and I know that your office is really tasked with a lot of, uh, activity, but I did get a call today, in fact, a, a complaint, uh, regarding a property in Providence, which is the first that I've gotten in the last six years. But the property located at number one Beck Street, um, I went by there today and just kind of took a look at it, and I was really surprised to see that the garage was boarded up with wood. The grass, you know, had grown up, and the property kind of looks abandoned, and, uh, it is kind of becoming an eyesore, and we usually don't have much of that in, in Providence. But if, um, your office or someone whom you've designated perhaps could, could take a look at that, um, I certainly would appreciate that and, and maybe let me know so that I can, uh, let the complainant know where we are with it, what, if anything, that, uh, that we can do. Are you familiar with that property by chance?
Not that particular one, but we can get somebody out there first thing in the morning.
Great, great, Mr. Binion. That's all I have. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Culver. Mr. Kling, Ms. Reed.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thanks for letting me go first, Mr. President. Uh, the, um, during the last couple of weeks, I've had a chance to work with, uh, three neighborhood groups on starting and re, restarting their community watch groups over in Triana Village, uh, also in the McThormore Acres area, and also in West Lawn. These are, uh, groups that had community watches in the past. They kind of went dormant, but they are getting reactivated and reinvigorated, and, uh, there's been great neighborhood participation, and I've been very, very proud to have been able to go and participate in some of their meetings, and there's been great resources, uh, from the police department, uh, to provide assistance to those neighborhoods, which are very much appreciated. Couple of things of a somber note. Last Sunday, uh, I went to the, myself, and I believe Councilman Cul, Russell was there at the Huntsville Holocaust Remembrance Day Ceremony, which was held at the Museum of Art. Some of us, including myself, might be of a younger generation, but, uh, uh, it was very sombering to hear firsthand accounts of the, uh, of the Holocaust and what it meant and the way it impacted, uh, uh, families in this community. Also, that same day earlier, uh, I went over to participate in the remembrance at Merrimack Cemetery. We laid, uh, flowers on the graves, and that was, uh, uh, something just to kind of recall the, the heritage of the Merrimack Mill community and what it's meant to this community, and certainly pay homage to the, um, the great things that the current Neighborhood Association is doing. Monday night, uh, working, uh, with the Holiday Homes Neighborhood Association, we had a, uh, meeting with, uh, uh, seven West Huntsville neighborhoods, including Crestwood, Merrimack, uh, Holiday Homes, the Host Group, uh, Low Mill, Triana Village, Bailey, Patton Estates, and West Lawn, uh, with the, uh, school superintendent to talk about, uh, empty schools and the impact that's going to have. And, uh, we had, and I'm appreciative that, uh, Councilman Showers came out, and he did ask some very poignant questions concerning the imping of, uh, Butler High School, because that certainly is going to impact that area. Empty schools are not good things, and there's concern about McDonald's School, also the West Huntsville Elementary School neighborhood area, Stone Middle School, and, uh, University Place School. And, uh, I think there was some good information that was exchanged. No great disclosures were made, but, uh, it appears that the school system is working on this. It appears no matter whether it's the city school system rezoning plan or the Justice Department rezoning plans, all these schools are being impacted, and that's neighborhoods, and like, like was said earlier, uh, empty buildings and large, uh, uh, in neighborhoods, you know, are not good things. They attract homeless, they attract, uh, uh, people who are going to just vandalize and throw a rock through the windows, and, uh, I think it was very positive. There's a lot of, uh, good information, and, um, hopefully we'll be hearing some good neighborhood-friendly announcements, uh, from the, uh, from the school system concerning, uh, uh, those school buildings. Mr. President, I'd like to say Happy Mother's Day and to all the mothers out there, and yield the remainder of my time to our guest council member for the day, for the day, Ms. Reed.
Oh, excuse me.
But we're glad to have you up here.
And Ms. Reed, I, Ms. Reed, I hate to tell you, but I think Mr. Kling used all his time. But, but will, the rest of the council will allow you to just be, go, go. You get as much as you want, much as, as much as Mr. Kling did.
Mr. Russell.
Anyway, I, first I want to thank, uh, the mayor, Tom Cunningham, and Mr. Jerry Cox for the recognition of public works and public services. And I want to thank all the city employees for the great job they do for the city of Huntsville. Yes, I'm pushing for your race on this side of the fence. I'm not up here, though, but I'm just pushing for it. I always am. Thank you. Uh, I did attend the mayor's meeting Tuesday night. I did hear from the Planning Department, no chickens in the city. That's what the planner said out there, and I've got a tape of it, but anyway, uh, th- there were some plannings. It was a great meeting. We didn't hear what we were going to do, but I'm sure when he gets ready to make some plans, future plans, I'd like to be a part of it, so I got a big input in it. Anyway, I thought it was a good meeting. I also attended, um, Mr. Kling's on Monday night. He had a good meeting, and I appreciate him letting me talk. Of course, it was, I had to take on a good friend of mine, Dr. Casey Wardiski. He's a dear friend of mine, but when we talk about selling Butler and closing Butler down in McDonald's School, you know, those neighborhoods, people come into town and they buy their homes according to the school districts and how, where their kids are going to go to school. So I'm against, and I'm still fighting with my dear friend and fussing the school board, do not shut all these schools down and not have a high school in the center of the city. But anyway, I'm still with hanging in with Kling. I want to appreciate him recognizing me. My daughter, she bought this certificate, and she hesitated to call Mr. Kling, but it was my mother's day present. I think he kind of wanted her up here, but she thought it's best for me. She was going to take me on in that three minutes, but she changed her mind. So I guess she can't fill my shoes anyway. I want to thank all the people of City Huntsville, and especially this group up here for putting up with me for the many years and the many comments and all the issues that I have taken on, and the mayor. I appreciate you too, mayor. Thank you very much, Tim.
Thank you, Ms. Reed. Well done. Doc Showers.
Thank you, Mr. President. Is Randy Taylor still here? Uh, Mr. Taylor, I've got a call, uh, just before council meeting, uh, about a license renewal. The, uh, individual indicated that they had the money, uh, to take care of the taxes, but that we would not receive it. They had a check, and, uh, I, I would like to get with you after this meeting, uh, see can we get that cleared tomorrow.
Yes, sir, I'll, I'll meet with you after the meeting.
Okay, uh, thank you so very much. The chief of police, uh, is he here tonight? Chief, we've heard that all over the state of Alabama this week, there's been an initiative to address, uh, this commercial drug, uh, that's going across the country, and of course, we had someone here tonight, uh, that also addressed that. Could you give us? Could you give us a status on where we are in Huntsville with the vendors that are moving these, uh, paraphernalias in this city?
Uh, yes, sir. The, the, uh, substance that you're talking about is a synthetic narcotic. Uh, synthetic drug is called spice. That's what's referred to, uh, in the, in the street. It's largely sold in small convenience stores. It's sold, sometimes when it first came out, it, uh, sold over the counter. The legislature passed the law. It is illegal, uh, to sell it. It's a very dangerous substance and it, uh, appears to be the, a substance of choice for young people. It is now generally sold under the table or under the counter, or much like the, the black market drug trade. Uh, the DEA had a nationwide initiative because they were able to track the proceeds from, a lot of those sales were going overseas. We did locate the largest amount here in Madison County in a federal search warrant, uh, that was located in a state. Uh, it was around two hundred pounds of it. Uh, we did serve some document and search warrants at some addresses or, or some convenience stores, or a convenience store located here and on the individuals' residence and it happened to be their locker. Uh, those will be passed on for federal prosecution, uh, through the DEA. Uh, the items that Pastor Garner is talking about are, are scales, uh, uh, little vase pipes that are commonly used for crack pipes, rolling papers, the things that you see, uh, when you go into a convenience store that are right there on the counter. Uh, at this particular point in time, it's not illegal to sell those items, but we make it clear that we don't like it and we take an aggressive stance against it. Uh, perhaps we can work together at some point in time to, to make that sale, uh, or those items illegal, uh, just like we did spice. Uh, Ms. Deborah Soule at the Partnership for a Drug Free Community is one of our partners and she was abs- actually instrumental in getting that spice law passed, uh, through the legislature too. I think it was last year. So that's, that's where we're at on it.
Uh, thank you very much. Uh, before you go back, I do want to acknowledge, uh, on last weekend, uh, my heart was tremendously touched by our police department. Mrs.'s mother, Odell Kelly, was funeralized. And it was just touching to see the, so many police personnel, uh, that was there at that final service. Uh, she, uh, has had two sons in our department. Uh, that one is still with us. Uh, one of the daughters worked at Chamber Commerce for a while, but it was just an outpouring of support from the police department for that family. And I wanna pass that on to you that, uh, we certainly in Huntsville, uh, know when to come together. And it was just so obvious, the support coming from the police officers, uh, for that final service. Thank you so much.
Well, thank you. I'll pass that along. Officer Kelly is, uh, is, is a valued member of the police department and, uh, I'll take this opportunity to say he's also a member of the Blue Notes. And, uh, thank you very much and I'll pass it along.
Um, I, I too today, I've had an opportunity to visit the, uh, annual luncheon, uh, for our stock, state soccer championship, uh, along with the mayor and, uh, Mark Russell. Uh, it may have been other council members there. Uh, Councilman Kling, were you, you, I thought I saw you eating, um, there today. They had a lot of food. Uh, but we're always delighted to host that, uh, as the mayor has already indicated, not only, uh, the soccer, but the girls softball over at the, uh, uh, location, uh, over at, uh, what's the name of that highway, Mark?
We have Metro Corners Field is where the softball is.
Yeah, yeah. So if you got a chance to go out and visit this weekend, Bill, and the mayor did give them the opportunity to know that, uh, he was gonna hold back the rain today. Uh, he didn't say for the Saturday or Sunday, but that was just the, like, great technical community college, uh, having their commencement exercises as we speak. Uh, I was invited to attend as you were and of course, we're here and was not able, uh, to get an opportunity to attend, uh, that commencement exercise. Uh, Troy Green, uh, Scott Master, uh, many of you know that he, uh, leads Troop 400 and they're having a ceremony this weekend, uh, in fact, six o'clock Friday out at Dryne Village, uh, where an Eagle Scout, uh, is going to be, uh, recognized and, uh, made in, in that ceremony. Uh, I do plan to attend that, uh, opportunity. I too had a chance to attend, uh, two meetings this week. Uh, Mr. Kling, uh, had a meeting of the Southwest Community Groups, uh, out at, uh, the church, Donation Church, and of course, uh, we was in attendance at that. But, uh, also the next night, which was Tuesday, at, uh, First Baptist Church, the mayor, uh, certainly had an opportunity where the community came together to get a glimpse of where we are headed in the city of Huntsville, all sectors of the city. I was immensely, uh, pleased with Dennis, Dennis Madison, uh, his comments, his remarks on how he handled where Huntsville is headed, where we are going. And then they had some meetings, uh, as individuals of various interests, uh, to attend those. And I attended one that Dennis was, and the first thing he talked about was North Huntsville. And you can imagine, John, how excited I was that he does in fact have a plan for North Huntsville. But let me tell you how he ended that. He said, "I really can't give you what you're asking me to give you. I need your support." So I'm saying to North Huntsville, when those meetings are scheduled for that part of town, we need all of us to attend those opportunities to give our input because he's basing, to a large degree, what we, uh, put in that we want to see happen, uh, in that part, uh, of our city. So I certainly wanna say to the mayor, we appreciate that being done. And of course, uh, uh, Mr. President, uh, that will end, uh, my comments for today. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Showers, and, and I just wanna echo some of the comments about the state soccer tournament being in town today, or town, town tomorrow. Uh, the Randolph Girls play at nine, the Randolph Boys at eleven fifteen, and Huntsville High Boys and Girls both play as well. Uh, they play later in the afternoon and evening. Uh, so there's four local teams in the tournament and we hope you'll go out and support those. It was interesting today that the executive director of the State High School Athletic Association, uh, congratulates on having the tournament for three more years. And he said it wasn't anything the mayor did, it wasn't anything the council did. It was all about our landscape department and how good their fields were. So. So I wanna congratulate our landscape department and, uh, and, and Dr. Showers has said this many times, often we get credit, but it's, uh, uh, this time we didn't get the credit and the landscape department did. So it was well deserved. So I congratulate those involved. We're now at thirteen unfinished business items for action. Thirteen A is ordinance number fourteen dash two eighty-one for the annexation of land on the west side of Old Big Cove Road and north of Bird Drive. This was introduced April twenty-fourth, two thousand and fourteen. The regular council meeting, the chair moves for approval. Second by Dr. Showers. Ms. Leto, please explain this.
Lisa Leto, Planning Division. This area that you see here highlighted in purple is one point nine one acres of property. It's on the west side of Old Big Cove Road and north of Bird Drive. It's residential land. There's one existing single-family detached dwelling and they are annexing for city services.
Thank you. Further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? It carries. B is ordinance number fourteen dash two eighty-two for the annexation of land on the south side of Naughty Walls Road and west of Old Big Cove Road. The chair moves for approval.
Second.
Second by Dr. Showers. Ms. Leto.
Yes, again, this is the area you see here in purple. It is one point two one acres of property. It is residential land. There's an existing single-family detached dwelling on the property and they are annexing for city schools.
Thank you. Further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. C is ordinance number fourteen dash two eighty-three for the annexation of land on the east side of Old Big Cove Road and south of Miller Lane. Chair moves for approval.
Second.
Second by Dr. Showers. Ms. Leto.
Yes, this is three point zero acres of land. Uh, it's again residential land. There's an existing single-family detached dwelling on the property and they're annexing for city schools.
Thank you. Further discussion?
Is, uh, that gonna remain one piece of, one dwelling or are there gonna be additional going on that property?
Yes, that is, it's just a large lot. It's one single-family detached dwelling and that's all that's planned to be there.
Thank you. Further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. We're now at new business items for introduction. Fourteen A is introduction of an ordinance of a street name change request from Penistar Drive to Remington Trail Southwest. Now, this property introduced will be voted on at our next regular council meeting. Fourteen B, C, and D, the, the administration has asked that we consider these items tonight by unanimous consent. So fourteen B is a, is an ordinance to amend section thirteen of ordinance zero four three fifteen, personnel policies and procedures for modification of the conduct and disciplinary policy. The chair moves for unanimous consent.
Second.
Second by Ms. Kling. Ms. Culver, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Oshewski.
Aye.
Mr. Kling.
Aye.
Dr. Showers.
No.
No, we do not have unanimous consent. That item has been introduced and will be voted on at the next regular council meeting. C is introduction of an ordinance adopting changes made by the Madison County Commission to voting precincts within Madison County, Alabama. The chair moves for unanimous consent to consider this item time.
Second.
Second by Ms. Kling. Mr. Culver, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Oshewski.
Aye.
Mr. Kling.
Aye.
Dr. Showers.
No.
No. That item, uh, will be, is properly introduced and will be voted on at our next regular council meeting. Fourteen D is an amendment to the Arts Entertainment District. We'll need unanimous consent. The chair moves for unanimous consent. Second by Dr. Showers. Ms. Culver, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Oshewski.
Aye.
Mr. Kling.
Aye.
Dr. Showers. The chair votes aye. We have unanimous consent. The chair moves for approval.
Second.
Second by Dr. Showers. Mayor Battlehoo and your, uh, administration could explain this, please? Mr. Hamilton, go ahead, please. We'll let Colonel John.
Yes, counsel, we, uh, we've been working with, uh, with Downtown Huntsville Inc., who has, uh, been putting on a lot of events downtown and they've, uh, worked closely with the police department to identify some really safer places to do some of these events that have been growing much larger than, uh, than we originally had. Uh, so the, uh, with Lieutenant Rice, uh, who leads that, uh, that, uh, division within the, within the police department, has identified two or three places where we'd like to be able to hold these events, where it's easier to close the roads, it takes less resources from the police department, uh, and also safer for the public. One of those is Fountain Circle, uh, that was identified specifically for the May event. As we went through that planning process, we discovered there's a portion of Fountain Circle that is not included in the current district boundaries. Uh, and so what this, uh, what this change does is extends the boundaries down Fountain Circle and also connects it to, uh, the peace on gates. So we don't put the public in a position of inadvertently violating the, the, the ordinance for moving around with alcohol. Uh, it, it leaves the city, uh, the city hall outside of the district as, as the council had always intended. It just moves the, the boundaries down Fountain Circle, including the sidewalk, so that we can do, uh, those public events in that area.
Thank you. Questions for Mr. Hamilton? Discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. Thank you. We're now at fifteen new business items for consideration or action. Keep in mind fifteen A has been deleted, fifteen T has been deleted, and fifteen V has been deleted. The chair holds fifteen S and fifteen W. Are there other items you'd like to hold? Are there any other items you'd like to hold, please? Hearing none. Fifteen B is approval to advertise and fill position of floodplain management analyst, pay grade fifteen, and to fill position that steps higher than minimum within the pay grade if necessary. C is approval to advertise and fill position of deputy director of city engineering, pay grade twenty, and to fill positions that step higher than minimum within the pay grade if necessary. D is a resolution authorizing mayor to enter an agreement with the low bidder, McCord Construction, for PIERAC bid for sanitary sewer bore items, two thousand and fourteen, project number sixty-five fourteen SP sixteen. E is a resolution authorizing mayor to modify the agreement with Arcatus US Inc. for Engineering Design Services for Dallas Branch, Penhead Creek, Phase One, project number sixty-five thirteen DR zero three by modification number one. F is a resolution authorizing mayor in agreement with AMEC Environmental Infrastructure Inc. for Engineering Hydraulic Modeling Services and Letter and Map Provision, submit a for a portion of Trivitary Three to Indian Creek, project number sixty-five fourteen DR zero one. G is a resolution authorizing mayor to amend the contract with SJ and L General Contractor LLC for Cecil Ashburn Turn Lane, project number sixty-five fourteen TI zero one by change order number one. H is a resolution authorizing mayor to modify the agreement with Johnson Associates Consulting Engineers LLC for Engineering Design and Construction Administration Services for Carmichael Park, project number sixty-five twelve DM twenty-five by modification number three. I is a resolution authorizing mayor to modify the agreement with Shark Communication Inc. for Radio Tower Sublease Agreement by Modification Number One. J is a resolution authorizing mayor to enter an agreement with the low bidders, meeting specifications outlined in attached summary of bids for acceptance. K is an ordinance to amend budget ordinance number thirteen dash six thirty by changing appropriating funding for various departments and funds. L is a resolution authorizing acceptance of donations. M is a resolution authorizing mayor in agreement with Alfred Benich and Company for two thousand and fourteen On Call Traffic Engineering Services, project number sixty-five fourteen TI zero three. N is a resolution of support and approval of Ojo Creek Greenway Extension from Weatherly Road to Esslinger Road. O is a resolution of support and approval of the EUL Pedestrian Bike Way Corridor between Redstone Arsenal and Governor's Drive West. P is a resolution authorizing mayor to agree between the city of Huntsville and Norman's Daughter doing businesses, ice work, shaved ice, and more. Q is a resolution authorizing clerk treasury revoke National Bank Commerce Letter Credit Number four zero zero six eight four seven hundred for the Cypress Gardens at Lake Forest Subdivision. R is a resolution authorizing clerk treasury revoke Bryant Bank Letter of Credit Number one 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 five for Greenway Park Subdivision. U is a resolution authorizing city attorney to settle the workers' compensation claim of Billy Killian. The chair moves for consolidation approval of fifteen B through R, fifteen U.
Second.
We have motion for consolidation approval by the chair, second by Mr. Kling. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. Fifteen S is a resolution revoking that certain license agreement between the city of Huntsville and Dwight Wright approved by resolution number thirteen dash five sixty-eight on July
Move to approve.
Two thousand and thirteen. Dr. Showers, move approve. The chair seconded. It's my intention to postpone this in the next regular council meeting. Does anyone want to discuss it before I make that motion?
Mr. President, I'll certainly support the motion. I've heard all this and, uh, now we're getting into more negotiations, lawyers and everything and debating and, you know, hopefully, you know, something will get resolved. But to me, just short and fast, uh, it seems like, uh, a seven-foot-tall fence would be a reasonable compromise. Uh, I wasn't able to reach Connie Graham and the, uh, the city demographer this afternoon, but, uh, I do not believe we have seven-foot-tall people here in the city of Huntsville that feel like that would be a reasonable compromise. But, uh, nobody was really interested in the idea, so certainly I'll, I'll support your motion, uh, to, to carry it over if that's what you feel is the best thing.
Thank you. I'm moved to postpone this issue until the next regular council meeting.
Second.
Second by Dr. Showers. All those in favor, postpone it. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. Fifteen W is a resolution authorizing mayor to approve and submit the two thousand and fourteen annual action plan.
Move to approve. Second.
Motion by Dr. Showers, second by Mr. Kling. Uh, Mr. Binion, can you, uh, briefly go over the highlights of this plan and then, then let me know how it affects, uh, District Two, please?
The highlights of this plan are basically, we've covered the same. Let me first explain the action plan. We do a five-year consolidated plan. Each year we do an action plan to tell HUD how we're proposing to spend the funds that we think we're gonna receive from them. But the highlights of this plan, basically, we had in CDBG funds about a million two hundred and seventy-two thousand, uh, five hundred and thirteen dollars. Of that, a hundred and seventy-five would go to organizations and the past has gone to the Boys and Girls Club. Uh, about four hundred and fifty thousand of it goes into code enforcement. We have put some money in this time for removal of blight, which some of the houses that we are demolishing, uh, demolishing, uh, we are using it to, uh, pay for the demolition of those particular properties. We have money going into weatherization under, under the CDBG funds, which would, uh, help senior citizens who, uh, qualify income-wise, uh, with, uh, making their houses energy efficient and, uh, which would ultimately save money for people who qualify and put more money in their pocket if they don't have to spend it on utility bills. So those are the basic highlights of the CDBG funds.
Thank, thank you. Council members, do you have any questions for Mr. Binion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. We're now at non-rotational communication for the public. If you'd like to address the council, please go to the microphone, state your name and address for the record. address for the record. Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
We adjourn.